Good evening and welcome to our regularly scheduled July 14th School Board Meeting. At this time, please rise if you are able and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. After the Pledge of Allegiance, please brief moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like us to share a brief moment of silence for Apple Valley High School's social studies teacher Bart Casperson, who passed away on Saturday, July 12th. Our heartfelt thoughts are with his wife Cody Casperson, a District 196 Special Education teacher, and their two sons, both students in our district. All right. Good evening, School Board. As always, our first item of business tonight is the approval of the agenda. There are no additions or deletions to the agenda tonight. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Robin, seconded by Sakoudin. All those in favor of approving the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries on a seven-zero vote. That brings us to our recognition portion of the agenda tonight. And first, I would like to welcome Scott Voss, Apple Valley High School's Speech Head Coach, to the podium to introduce the students who placed in the National Speech and Debate Association Competition.
Good evening, Board Members, Chairperson Johnson, Superintendent Bolsoni. My name is Scott Voss, and I am the Director of Speech and Debate at Apple Valley High School. And I'm here to present some exceptionally young people to you. We just returned from our trip to Des Moines for the Grand National NSDA Tournament where Apple Valley High School was placed in the top 10 in the nation out of a pool of 1,300 schools. And we had three young people who were actually recognized as national finalists. To put that into perspective, approximately 145,000 students each year participate in speech and debate. To get to Nationals, you have to go through a qualifying tournament. And these two people, plus Yair, who is not with us tonight, competed in pools of about 300 people, and all three of them placed in the top two in the country, which is pretty exceptional. We don't have Yair with us tonight, but Yair, a year ago today, didn't even know what speech was. He happened to walk onto the team as a senior, and over the course of the year, he found some material, dramatic pieces, that eventually took him to the final stage. It told the story of a young undocumented immigrant who was working at the Twin Towers on 9/11. And he talked about how, to this day, we still do not know the true number of people who died in the 9/11 attacks because there were a number of them that were undocumented. They were essentially invisible. In his introduction, Yair says, "We can advocate for immigrants without having to mention how useful they are. We are here, we are human, we matter, and that should be enough." So we are extremely proud for Yair. He has never acted before, and yet here he is, the second-ranked actor in the country. And so we're excited. Next year, Yair will be attending St. Thomas University here in the cities. So congratulations to Yair. We also have Isra Yassin, who is a junior at Apple Valley High School. You saw her a few weeks back. She was the state champion in original oratory, which is persuasive speaking. Her thesis centers around maintaining civil rights and what we need to do in order to protect them. At one point, she says, "These rights, like seedlings, are fragile. They need to be protected, not just from the invasive weeds of greed and complacency, but from the scorching sun of hatred and ignorance. And we have to decide if the fruits of our gardens are for everyone or just for the privileged few." Isra decided that it wasn't enough just to share this message within the speech and debate community, but she wanted to take it into the community as whole. And in the weeks since she came back from Des Moines, has booked a number of opportunities to go out and to speak with people, to engage people who might not necessarily agree all the time, and to get them involved in some more open dialogue at a time when it's really difficult to do so. And then, of course, we have Ms. Anaya Bostic, who is the national champion in program Oral and Terp. It is a category where you develop a theme, and the theme that she chose was people of color and their complex relationship with water. From a young girl at a public pool to middle passage, the deep spirituality of African beliefs, Anaya combined music and poetry and nonfiction, along with some amazing choreography, in order to bring her message to life. Not only did she win the tournament, she won the final round. And we are so excited that Anaya will be joining us once again. Anaya was also in that final round a year ago. So to get to the national final round once is amazing, to get there twice is virtually unheard of. And so we are extremely thankful for all of those who have helped us get to where we are, including the Apple Valley community, Drew Mons and Bill Blatsheim, as well as District 196, who have done so much to foster an environment of excellence. So we are grateful. We're going to come around and shake hands, but we're going to leave Anaya up here because she's got another distinction that you're going to learn about.
Next, I'd like to welcome Erin Schwab to the podium to introduce the district's recipient of the 2025 Triple Threat New York Experience. And I have a feeling we may have seen her before.
I'm sure. Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, Board Members, and Superintendent Bolsoni. My name is Erin Schwab. I've been a director of all things theater at Apple Valley High School now for about seven years. I'm so thrilled to be here tonight for the recognition of the great accomplishment in theater for Anaya Bostic. Anaya received one of the Spotlight Education's Triple Threat Awards, given to four very special, very talented young people from across the state of Minnesota. Out of hundreds of students that applied, moved on, then cuts to callbacks, and then to being one of the top 24 young actors in the entire state of Minnesota, Anaya received one of four coveted Triple Threat New York Experiences. I know. The Triple Threat Experience is an all-expenses-paid trip to New York City, where the young actors attend Broadway shows, meet with industry professionals, and participate in workshops. They get to tour the city, the Broadway Museum, and really experience the true excitement of New York City musical theater firsthand. It's really cool to put yourself in the place where you might want to be and see yourself there. It changes perspective on a lot of things. So we're grateful to Triple Threat for doing this experience. I'm so thankful and continually inspired working with Anaya, who has helped me and held me accountable in my goal to continue to represent and specifically select shows that require BIPOC and LGBTQIA+ actors playing those characters, and also making sure the stage inside the high school looks like the high school outside in the hallways. I was stopped numerous times when I was at the Spotlight Showcase with Apple Valley High School, getting ready to perform, by all different kinds of people who were working at Spotlight Awards, from the wranglers to the directors, to the main director, who all said, "Thank you so much for sharing Anaya with us. She is incredible. She is thoughtful. She is kind. She is hardworking. She shows up, and she holds everybody else up around her." And I said, "Thank you. That's all me." And then, no, I didn't. I didn't say that. Actually, they said, "What a great director you are." And I said, "You know what? With Anaya, it's a recipe of about 50/50, right? It's a lot of me saying, 'Hey, try this,' and a lot of her showing up and questioning everything that we say, and then, with good reason, to do that and hold us accountable for the things that we ask, and be so thoughtful about the choices that she makes." And I'm so excited about that. And now my little speech went away. Wait. Anaya, yep, she is an incredible young person. That is what I said to all of them. She is an incredible young person. I also would like to thank her mom and the rest of her family for raising such an incredibly brave, gifted, hard-working young person. I know that that does not come naturally all the time, and so I appreciate that. And actually, her family is here if they would like to stand and be recognized as well. Hello. So thank you for trusting me, Anaya. Thank you for setting the example for others in storytelling, attitude, bravery, hard work, and for playing, laughing, and singing with me. Anaya Bostic, just so you know, it did autocorrect your name to Animal Bostic in my phone. I didn't read it that way. Anaya and I are thrilled to be here and thrilled to have Anaya be the first representative as Triple Threat from Apple Valley High School. Woo-hoo.
What was your favorite show in New York?
Oh, yeah. It was a great one.
Congratulations.
It's my pleasure. So good to see you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
And finally, I'd like to welcome Pete Roback, Principal of Rosemont High School, to the podium to introduce a student who earned a State Publicist State Award.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, School Board Members, Superintendent Bolsoni, and Community Members. My name is Pete Roback, and I'm the Principal of Rosemont High School. And this introduction of our student Molly will take on a little bit more of a principal-type feel. I'm not a speech debate or a theater teacher, so apologize for the formality of how I'm going to present this award. Anyways, I'm honored this evening to recognize an outstanding achievement by Molly Pittson, a 2025 graduate of Rosemont High School. And I am sorry to say, I will not be referencing Molly's real claim to fame, and that's her appearance on Wheel of Fortune two years ago in the Under-18 Division. So she does have fame, but we're not here to talk about that. Anyways, I digress. We recently learned that Molly was the recipient of the State Spotlight Education Student Publicist Award. Spotlight Education is Minnesota's largest theater education organization, sponsored and supported by Hennepin Arts. Each year, over 1,000 students come together to put on the Spotlight Showcase at the State Theater, highlighting the best of high school theater from the previous school year. The coveted Student Publicist Award is presented to Minnesota students who are interested in theater, marketing, and writing. Through a lengthy application and interview process, Molly was one of two students across the state awarded this honor and selected to help promote the showcase on their social media pages by creating content and engaging followers. Molly spent two weeks in Minneapolis, working with industry professionals and Spotlight Education staff to learn more about theater marketing. She was also awarded a $1,000 scholarship for this role. Molly graduated this year from RHS Summa cum laude with honors. She was involved in theater arts as a performer, was the Public Relations Officer for Thesbian Honor Society, and was a School and State of Minnesota DECA officer. Outside of Rosemont High School, Molly was a member of the City of Rosemont Youth Commission and was a student journalist for Spotlight Education's Critical Review Program. Molly will be attending the University of Minnesota Twin Cities in the fall to study political science and strategic communication for advertising and public relations. Keep an eye out for Molly. She has an incredible future in front of her. So please join me in recognizing Molly for this special achievement, as well as her parents, who are with us tonight, Mike and Sarah. Please stand. Thank you.
Congratulations. You were still entertaining.
Yes.
All right. Next, I will turn the meeting over to Superintendent Bolsoni for recognition of students and staff.
All right. Thank you, Chair Johnson. Congratulations to Valley Middle School of STEM's Conservation Crew, which won first place in this year's Conservation Minnesota Program. And to do so, the student-led organization, it's an eco-organization, led the way in diverting 3,000 pounds of waste from landfills. They planted trees this year. They created signage to boost recycling, and they were leading food waste education around the school. So congratulations to Valley Middle School of STEM. And next, I would like to invite Director of Elementary Education Jeremy Sorensen to the podium to introduce two of our new elementary principals.
All right. Good evening, Chair Johnson, members of the board, and Superintendent Bolsoni. My name is Jeremy Sorensen. I'm the Director of Elementary Ed. Just a note, last board meeting, I followed the AAA report, and now we're following these students. So hopefully get a break at the next meeting. All right. Tonight, we're here to introduce two new elementary principals. In April, we started to process to search for three new elementary principals due to retirements at Westview, Southview, and Woodland Elementary Schools. At our last board meeting, we introduced Mr. Donzel Dixon as the next principal of Westview Elementary, and tonight, we're introducing two more new elementary principals. So first, I'd like to introduce Sarah Stratton, the next principal of Southview Elementary in Apple Valley. Sarah comes to us from Forest Lake Public Schools, where she most recently served as principal of Lionel Lakes Elementary STEM School. With 13 years of experience in education, she's passionate about fostering a school culture centered in strong relationships, high academic standards, and developing the whole child. Sarah began her career as a physical education teacher and a program coordinator before joining Forest Lake Area Schools, where she served in a variety of roles, including Title I Behavior Specialist, Wellness Coordinator, Dean of Students, and Assistant Principal. Throughout her leadership, she has demonstrated excellence in instructional and data-driven improvement. Sarah holds a bachelor's degree from Northwest Missouri State and a master's degree in educational leadership from Bethel University. We're excited to have her join District 196 in her new role at Southview Elementary. Please join me in welcoming Sarah Stratton to District 196.
Well, thank you. That is a really tough act to follow with students. But I can just tell, my very first board meeting of all the positive happenings happening here in District 196, and that's all I've heard during my transition here. People always rave about all the good things happening here, and so I'm really excited to be joining the team here and really looking forward to collaborating with students, staff, and families at Southview to create some lifelong learners. Thank you.
All right. Next, we're proud to welcome Christine McGuire as the next principal of Woodland Elementary School in Eagan. Christine comes to us from Belle Plaine, where she's most recently served as principal at Chatfield Elementary. She brings 17 years of experience in education, including previous roles as Assistant Principal at Cherryview Elementary in Lakeville, Dean of Students, and Classroom Teacher in Shakopee, as well as teaching positions in North Dakota. During her time in the classroom, she's taught first, second, and third grades. Christine is a relationship-driven leader and systems thinker with a strong commitment to collaboration, high expectations, and student-centered learning. She believes in creating an environment where every child is valued, supported, and inspired to thrive. Christine holds two bachelor's degrees, one in elementary education from Valley City State University, and another in child development and family sciences from North Dakota State University, along with a master's degree in educational leadership from Minnesota State University Morehead. Please join me in welcoming Christine McGuire to District 196.
Thank you. I'm much shorter than the rest of you. Thank you. I'm so excited to be here and honored to serve as the principal of Woodland Elementary. These last eight days have been amazing, already getting to meet much of the staff and some of the students there, so it's been a wonderful welcome. As stated, I am excited to continue to work on student growth, partnering with families, as well as continuing the collaboration along the strong staff that Woodland already has. There's an amazing foundation there with dedicated staff that I'm really looking forward to hit the ground running with here in the next few weeks. Thank you.
So glad to have you. I have a friend on the Forest Lake School Board. She was very mad at me when you accepted her.
Congratulations again. Great to see you.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. I have an incoming fifth grader, so I'll send a couple weeks' ed.
Congratulations again. Great to see you.
Thank you.
And that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Superintendent Bolsoni. Next on the agenda is our special communication request. Members of the public who would like to address the board can sign up, can do it a couple ways, and one of the ways they can do that is a special communication request by signing up in advance. We have one speaker for special communication requests tonight. Just for our speaker, speakers are given four minutes to address the board, and just I always like to explain it a little bit. When we start, after you introduce yourself, we'll start your time, and there'll be a little green button that'll turn on. When you have 30 seconds remaining, it'll turn amber, and when your time is done, it'll turn red, and you'll hear a little beep, and that's when you can conclude your remarks. So I'd like to welcome Jessica Heiser to the podium for our special communication request speaker tonight.
Thank you so much, Chair Johnson and Vice Chair Williams, members of the board, Superintendent Bolsoni. My name is Jessica Heiser. I live on the border of Burnsville and Apple Valley. Actually, Burnsville's my front yard, Apple Valley's my backyard, with my spouse, who works in healthcare, and our two children, one of whom is here tonight for a mandated civics lesson that she came to kicking and screaming, but she's here. Our two children are enrolled in Echo Park Elementary, the magnet school led by Principal Logan Schultz. I should preface this with, I have been an education attorney for over 13 years, and I've represented a couple hundred school boards. I have been yelled at at many school board meetings before. COVID masks, book bans, school shootings, you name it, I've been there. So I know that most people who come up to speak are angry. That is not me. I am here today with just heaps of gratitude. We moved to Minnesota just last year from Indiana, and we were specifically moving for a more welcoming and safe environment for our children. And we did a lot of research. We contacted community organizations, and we talked to friends on the ground. And I watched your school board meetings, and I read through your school board policies. There are people out there in other states who are watching them. And we specifically chose District 196 because of what your leadership has done for this district. And I really feel like in the last year, we have simply found just a reprieve from a very tumultuous world. Our children have been challenged academically. Our kindergartner came home in the first week using words that we had never heard before, and we told him he was wrong. He was not. They were real words. And we learned about vivipurs and ovipurs, egg-laying and live, young animals. We had no idea what he was talking about. And the STEM curriculum at Echo Park Elementary has really turned my kids into little engineers and really opened up their minds. We have used the community education programming more than I could ever have imagined. My kids came from a summer camp today, and we use it for extracurriculars and spring break activities. In the hundreds of schools I've been in, it's the best I've ever seen. We have had these partnerships with the older schools, with Apple Valley High School. My kid is now into singing and dancing and performing arts, which we had never been to before. My parents flew in from Indiana to see an Apple Valley High School performance, and they were so impressed. The social-emotional learning curriculum has been phenomenal for our kids. They went on a field trip to feed my starving children. I can't imagine why I have not heard of field trips before that were around community service. It was wonderful. And at the end of the school year, we had the Echo Park Elementary Carnival, and it was just the most beautiful evening to see all of these hundreds of people, different races, different generations, different languages, all in a really beautiful community. And it just felt like a complete sanctuary. So I want to thank you for your service. It's very difficult to consistently think about inclusivity and equity, especially when passing school board policies and things like that, but we know that that is bred and sustained and affirmed. And so I just want to really affirm and thank you for what you've done. The public comment form asked me to say what action item I wanted, and I couldn't think of another one, but just keep it up. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Jessica. With that, we're just going to end our meeting on a high note. No, we're just going to... I'm kidding. No, thank you very much for your comments, and welcome to the community as well. Next on the agenda is our consent agenda. We have 22 items on the consent agenda tonight. Those items include the minutes of the June 23, 2025 Regular School Board Meeting, the minutes of the June 23, 2025 Special School Board Meeting, Treasurers' Report for May 2025, Revenues and Expenditures Report for May 2025, Gifts, Grants, Truth and Taxation Hearing, Personnel, Joint Powers Agreement with the State of Minnesota, Directed Admissions, Minnesota, Long-Term Facilities Maintenance, 10-Year Plan for 2026-2035, Purchase of Microsoft A3 Licensing, Purchase of Personal Finance Curricular Resources, Purchase of Social Studies Curricular Resources, Activity Center, Strength and Performance Equipment, Rosemont High School Activity Center Addition and Renovations, Thomas Lake Elementary Encroachment Agreement for Student Teaching with the Midge State University, St. Olaf College, St. Mary's University, and Concordia University St. Paul, an Agreement for Clinical Experience with Minnesota State University Morehead, Non-Public School Counseling Agreements. Are there any items on the consent agenda that board members would like to remove tonight? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent?
So moved.
Motion by Robin, seconded by Catherine. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries on a seven-zero vote. That brings us to our reports section of the agenda, and I'd like to welcome Spencer Fisher to the podium to present on our school lunch program.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, School Board Members, Superintendent Bolsoni. I appreciate the opportunity to bring an update to the Nutrition Services Program. I think it's been about two years since I've done a report to the school board, so I'm very excited to share all the excellent work that the Nutrition Services Team does to fuel our students for top success. One of the things that I'd like to start with is how I always start any meetings that I have with my team, and that's a strategic roadmap. It's a guiding document for us, and we put our own spin on it with nutrition services. So for example, educating, developing, and inspiring our students for lifelong success, and becoming a lifelong eater, right? Because we all eat, and just making those wise choices for the food that they consume, it really starts with, at school, with the nutrition base that we set. The elementary kindergarten through first grade, or kindergarten through fifth grade, the elementary set, we really tell the students what to eat. The sixth through eighth, we open up the options that the students have so that they have a little more variety. And then ninth through 12, we really open it further to give them more options, with the hope, whatever they may do at the end of their career with District 196, that they have those foundations of a good nutritional diet. So it's been two years since the Minnesota Free School Meals Program has been enacted through legislation, and there's a couple different ways that the nutrition services is funded. So the first one is when students are receiving educational benefits. Most, or majority of the reimbursement that we get for that is through the federal government. Then, if the student isn't receiving any educational benefits, that's where Minnesota picks up those meals. So that's the second part. And then, if a student is receiving partial benefits, then money comes from both of those buckets. So the Nutrition Services Fund is a self-funded program. So if you think about restaurants, that's exactly what we do. So every dollar that we make, we put back into our program. And if you think about the number of kitchens that we have, we're the largest restaurant in Dakota County. So Keynes has nothing on us, because we have our own special sauce, okay? And I just want to tell the importance of those educational benefits. It not only tells where the money comes from, but it also supports each of the schools with compensatory funding. So it's really important that every family completes those educational benefit applications each year. And as I mentioned, with the Minnesota Free School Meals, there's no charge for... Then if the student isn't receiving any educational benefits, that's where Minnesota picks up those meals. So that's the second part. And then if a student is receiving partial benefits, then money comes from both of those buckets. So the Nutrition Services Fund is a self-funded program. So if you think about restaurants, that's exactly what we do. So every dollar that we make, we put back into our program. And if you think about the number of kitchens that we have, we're the largest restaurant in Dakota County. So Keynes has nothing on us because we have our own special sauce, okay? And I just want to tell the importance of those educational benefits. It not only tells where the money comes from, but it also supports each of the schools with compensatory funding. So it's really important that every family completes those educational benefit applications each year. And as I mentioned with the Minnesota Free School Meals, there's no charge for those meals. And so the first breakfast and first lunch are at no charge to the students. And this has had a significant increase in the meals that we're serving. So when meals were paid for back two years ago, we've seen a breakfast increase of 53%. So last year, we served 1.2 million breakfasts. Then lunch, we had an 18.5% increase and that's 3.4 million lunches that we served in 168 days. So I have to give it off, give it to the team in the kitchens that see your students, see the children of District 196. Because if we're averaging that out, it's over 27,000 meals a day that we provide our community and our students. And it's all done with 212 contracted employees, 35 staff that are substitutes. They can choose when they want to work, which sounds like an ideal job right now, so. And then with, with those increase of meals, there's also an increase in workload. So we've been able to increase the hours that staff is working. We're adding additional staff to the kitchens. And just this last year, we've been able to offer 25% of the nutrition services staff benefits. So, which is a huge, huge thing for the teams in the kitchens to be able to have that insurance and those other benefits. So I feel very proud that we're able to do that. And, you know, and we're still maintaining the efficiencies in the kitchens, being fiscally responsible. We keep an eye on what's called meals per labor hour. So that's how many meals a kitchen can cook for the students in each day. So it's a, there's a national standard out there and I want to say that we're slightly above average in our efficiencies. So I have to again, give it up to the teams that are in the kitchen for all that work that they do. Another key performance indicator that we've been highlighting is our farm to school initiatives. A specialist in my office, Abby Massey Angelo, really spearheaded the work with our farm to school leadership team. She worked with Thomas Lake, the kindergarten team there. We invited some different farmers in and had just a great year. Every month, we created a harvested month. So it's a Minnesota grown product that we highlighted on our menus. And that was served K through 12. But the pilot program that we did with Thomas Lake Elementary, I'm just going to go forward one slide. We did a punch card. So each month, there was a different highlighted thing. The kindergarten students had these punch cards and it got them really excited about what was school lunch. And they gave them an opportunity to try something new that they haven't had before. Along with that, we have these pictures of the interactions that we had with students. That first picture is Fonda Smith, one of our District 196 cultural family advocates, talking about the wild rice that we sourced from First Nation Ojibwe in northern Minnesota. The second picture there is Erin Brand from Brand Farms. I think everybody knows who he is. He's a staple in the community. And so he's reading a book about apples to our students. And then the final picture there is Deanne Lufkin. She's the cheese curd maker. And we highlighted the cannon bell cheese curds at our halfway to the state fair day, which is by the way, one of our most popular menu days ever. I think, Michael, you were there that day and it was, it was a lot of fun to see the interaction with the students and with Deanne especially, explaining how cheese curds are made. The next thing I want to talk about is the diverse menu choices that we offer here in District 196. From sambusas to papousas to alfredos, we really focus on the diversity of our menu to reflect the students that we have in our schools while also trying to make it as local as we can. This year, we've partnered with a Minnesota grown beef company in southeast Minnesota, where we brought two new meatball recipes, a meatball sub and then a sweet and sour meatball. And then at our high schools, we have flame grilled hamburgers twice a week. So, and with those burgers, we also do a burger of the month that have some different spins and flavors on the burger. So if you think of when you go to the local restaurant or what and they always have the, like the breakfast burger, oh, egg and bacon on it. Well, we tried some kimchi burger with boom boom sauce. And only the most daring students tried that. So I want to say that it adds a little bit to the menu. And then I think two years ago, I had brought about our plant-based protein that we were working with. We had spaghetti. It's been on the menu regularly. And this past year during March, Greenleaf Elementary had a food competition. So students would vote on what their favorite meal was and that spaghetti made it to the third round. So I'm very happy about the progress that that menu, that menu item has taken. A couple of other items that we've introduced this past year is a beef and broccoli meal, like Mongolian beef style. We always update our recipes. We're working on a new fried rice recipe that is allergen friendly. And we're also updating our regular brown rice recipe because it just didn't have the flavor that it needed. So we have been working all this summer to try and elevate the quality of food that we're serving to our students. Well, how, how do menu items get on the school menu? Well, first we do a little testing in the office. I think Virgil got to test some rice with us. And then, and then the next step is to bring it in front of students. So that is with kitchen cabinets. So we like to get student input in the meals that we have. And so I think I already mentioned the bomb burger. So we tested those burgers with some students. And then we also brought chicken tinga to the elementary schools this year. So, and some of our managers, kitchen managers were like, ooh, that's, that's a little spicy for our students. But you know what? They like the spice. So it's, it's very good. So chicken tinga at our elementary schools. We have a cheesesteak recipe that we brought into our middle schools. And then we, you know, looking forward to more menu items this coming year, including tamales, zesty farm roasted chicken breast, new breakfast sandwiches and ramen bowls. So we are going to be testing those, getting them in front of students to try and captivate them to participate in our meal program. And then with all these meals, we also have to take into account our sustainability initiatives. This includes, how do we reduce that food waste? How do we cut down on the amount of trash that's going into the landfills, things like that? So to start with, I'll talk about food waste and some of the things that we do directly that impacts our students. So the first one is what's called offer versus serve. It's a USDA regulation that we can have students come through and they choose what they want to eat. Instead of, when I was going to high school, you got everything on the line, right? So, and there was a lot of food waste there. So we do use that offer versus serve where students can choose what they want to eat. And at least on their tray, there has to be a half cup of fruits and veggies. Now, fruits and veggies are unlimited to our students. So if they want a whole tray full of strawberries, we're going to say yes. And can you make some variety of your fruit choices and leave some strawberries for the next, next student behind you? But really being able to have the students choose what they want to eat has proven that they will actually eat it when they get to their table. So another part of that food waste is what's called a sharing table. So if there's a, like a packaged sandwich or a banana that a student doesn't, doesn't, won't eat or consume, they can put it on the share table and any other student can go and grab that piece of fruit to keep it for later or for snack. So it's, so that has proven to reduce that food waste. Another item that we do is to reduce the amount of disposables that we have. So we've switched over to metal superware at our elementary schools and we're also serving bulk style at all of our schools. So what bulk style means is that students serve themselves. So if they want a half a cup of fresh fruit or whatnot, they can just take a half a cup. If they just want one piece of fruit, we're going to ask them to take a little bit more to meet that requirement. But again, it's unlimited because we know that that student that does take that full cup or a cup and a half, there'll be another student that evens it out. So. And then with other disposables, in the picture here, you can see that we're using stainless steel trays. These trays will last for approximately 10 years where the normal melamine tray only has like a life of about four to five years and they're more easily stained. And so when a student gets a stained tray, it's like, it's a disconnect for them. And it really doesn't give a good atmosphere for the students and their dining experience. So. And then just in conclusion, I'm so proud of our nutrition services department and being able to fuel the top performance for our students and just know that we're supporting that lifelong success. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? Anna?
I just want, I just want to say, Cecile?
I think so.
Okay. Thank you so much. This was very informative. Even though my little ones have moved on and now they're in college, I remember being a volunteer in the cafeteria at Deerwood Elementary and getting to see some of the food that was provided, especially there was a farm to table we did, they did too when my kids were there. And I was so impressed with the choices that they had, how beautiful the food was and how healthy it was. So thank you. I also want to say that I love the exposure to different cultural foods. One of the biggest indicators of people who find, seem to find success as adults with different cultural differences or interacting with different cultures is that early exposure through food, dance, music, and it's a good foundation. So I love that we're doing that. Thank you so much. It's exciting. Who knew that food could be so exciting in the school, in the, in the, in the lunchrooms, but it's exciting. So thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, I love food and I'm so excited about food and getting it out in front of the students. So, thank you.
Jackie?
Spencer, I just want to say, we are really proud of you and the program that you've built. And next time Virgil does a taste test, you can invite some of us. Chicken tinga looks good. Burgers with kimchi, that sounds wonderful. But I'm really proud of the program that you have built and it's been fun watching you build that along the way and your whole team. I'm especially proud that this year we've increased the people eligibility for insurance. I mean, with all the food things that you're doing and all the increases and all, it's been, it's been a crazy couple of years. But that's really important for the people that work in your group to have access to insurance. So thank you for that.
Yeah, and I think that's an understatement that it's been a crazy couple of years because once, once meals went no charge, it was like
It was crazy.
Full fast.
It was, yeah.
Full and fast. So, thank you. Yeah, and I'm very happy that, you know, we have to take care of our staff in the kitchen so that they can take care of our students and so that they can have a successful time afterwards. Yeah.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Leah?
I said I wasn't going to ask too many questions, but I never said I wasn't going to have a statement, which is just that I think Spencer, the work that you and your team do for our district, I think is, is top notch and something that can be an example that, that I intend to help us lift up for other districts because a lot of what happens at the lunchrooms is very district specific, just like everything else, right? And so how we deliver these services, I think we're approaching, you know, with an innovative lens and trying to be creative and I think it's paying off and just something that, that we should be proud of and maybe need to brag about a little more. So I'm going to try to help with that.
Thank you. Robyn?
Yes, thank you. Again, I'll just echo what everyone's saying and saying thank you for all that you do. And I remember volunteering in the Glacier Hills lunchroom and the amount of food waste, you know, helping the students figure out which trash can was compostables and which can was, you know, recyclables and how that has gone down. It's just wonderful how you focused on that. And I also want to say, the chicken tinga is a big favorite among the high schoolers and they look forward to it. Just putting a little word in there.
Yes, absolutely. Well, thank you for your time.
We've got one more comment.
Yeah, I'm going to add two if I can. So thank you Spencer. Couple of things I just wanted to note. As a cabinet, we go around and visit with students specifically and we ask them a lot of questions about what they like about their experience and maybe what they don't. And that gives us a good insight into student voice. And in the last few years, one of the topics that has come, has risen to the top almost every time we ask what they like about their school is their food. And they talk about the menu items they like. They're excited about the meals. I've visited younger students during summer school where they're eating breakfast and they're showing off their breakfasts to me. In fact, one student mentioned that not only does he eat breakfast at home, he loves to eat breakfast at school as well. And so they know. I mean, it's now an incentive and they really enjoy that. Secondly, I just wanted to say, and it builds on the comments of others. I was at a meeting recently with Dakota County officials and staff. And Spencer, they talked about you and your programming and they referred to you as the most innovative food service director in the state of Minnesota. And so I just want to say, people are noticing what you're doing. As Leah talked about, you know, getting the word out. The word is out and people are very respectful of what you do and very impressed and we can see why. So thank you for your work. And thank you for your teams too. You're a great leader. The staff does a lot of work to make this happen and we appreciate your leadership for that to be possible.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Spencer, I can't echo anything else that's already been said, but I did just have to say, I know one incoming fifth grader, Woodland Elementary, who's going to lose her mind when she sees ramen on her plate. So.
Well, that's her goal.
So excited. Thank you Spencer.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next, I would like to welcome Jeremy Sorensen to the podium and Stephen Belkamp to go over attendance and course completion data.
All right. Good evening Chair Johnson, members of the school board and Superintendent Bolsoni. My name is Jeremy Sorensen. I'm the Director of Elementary Education. Tonight, I'm here with Stephen Belkamp, our Coordinator of Research, Assessment and Analytics to provide an update on our 2024, 2025 school year attendance data, as well as provide data around our course completion for secondary schools. The purpose of this report is to provide information and there is no action needed from the board at this time. In alignment with our strategic roadmap, we are focusing on promoting and maintaining the positive student attendance and ensuring successful course completion. These efforts support our strategic priorities related to wellbeing, achievement, equity and resources. So as you may recall from previous attendance reports, consistently attending is defined by the Minnesota Department of Education as a student attending school more than 90% of the school days in which they are enrolled. We know that consistently attending school offers our students the opportunity to achieve higher academically, participate in collaborative learning, as well as access academic resources and support in a timely manner. We recognize that our students are absent, absent for a multitude of reasons. Those that miss less than 17 total school days in a full school year will be considered consistently attending. So 17 days is that marker for us. To support our students and their attendance, our school teams continue to meet individual To support our students and their attendance, our school teams continue to meet individually with students and families to provide support when improvement in attendance is needed. Because our students will have unique reasons as to why they're absent, learning and understanding why absences occur will help our school teams to partner with students and families in creating specific plans for improved attendance. At this time, I'll be handing it over to Stephen Belkamp to review the actual data for this year.
Thank you. Good evening Chairperson Johnson, members of the board and Superintendent Bolzoni. It's good to see all of you again. We had to follow food, so I know your stomachs are rumbling. So I'll make this concise. How does that sound? So here are the district's end of year consistent attendance percentages by school level. Consistently attending percentages are cumulative for the school year. So trimester three numbers are really cumulative through the whole school year. As Jeremy mentioned on the last slide, a student is consistently attending if they attend more than 90% of the school days for which they are enrolled. And you can see some positive trends on this screen and so I'm really excited to bring those to you. So you can see consistently attending trends over the past four school, school years. So the percentage of elementary students who are consistently attending increased by 2.8 percentage points over last year. That may seem like a small number, but that is roughly 350 elementary school students who are now attending more than 90% of the school year, more than last year. At the middle school level, the consistently attendance, consistently attending rate increased by 0.9 percentage points. That's about 60 students. And at the high school level, it increased by 1.5 percentage points, roughly 135 students. So in total, we had 545 more students consistently attending this school year than compared to last year. So that brings our district-wide consistently attending rate to about 84.8% of students. That is up from 83% last year. Okay? And as a comparison, how does this compare with the, with the state average? I can report that the most recently published state average was 74.5. So we are well above the state average for consistently attending. Our principals and school staff continue to analyze student attendance across our demographic groups in the district's data dashboard, Unified Insights. So I do want to direct your attention to one of the handouts we provided, which outlines the 2425 attendance broken down by demographic group. So our data shows that in elementary schools, the percentage of students who consistently attended ranges, again, by demographic group, anywhere from 77.8% to 93.8%. That's the elementary levels. For middle school, the range was 67.8% to 91%. And for high schools, the demographic consistently attending ranged from 63.7 to 88%. So that is, again, aggregated data. But building teams also have data to analyze individual student attendance patterns. So this allows us to move beyond general trends, as you see here, and really develop situation-specific strategies to support students and families. By identifying the root causes of absenteeism, regardless of the barrier, we collaborate with families to implement targeted interventions that encourage consistent attendance. So to summarize the attendance here, we know attendance is an important part of being successful in school. It has impacts on academic achievement as well as social development. Regular attendance helps students stay on track with their learning, build strong connections with their peers and teachers, and develop consistent routines and habits that are essential for lifelong success after K-12 education. Consistent and intentional monitoring of student attendance is crucial and we are committed to that. It helps us identify patterns, address barriers, and implement strategies to improve student engagement and achievement. Proactive attendance patterns fosters a positive supportive learning environment. And we are committed to sharing attendance updates with you in the years ahead. I'm now going to switch our, our conversation to course completion data. So we are going to look at course completion data summarized by trimester that you see on the screen right now. So we define course completion as successfully finishing a course with a passing grade. And at the high school, that means also earning credit towards graduation. So like our high schools, we're going to start with middle schools here first. Middle schools closely monitor course completion rates as it can have an impact on students' future academic success in high school. I want to recall back in April, our secondary director, Eric Hanson, cited two articles related to attendance. The first one was five key findings for middle grades. And that, that study found that students who are chronically absent or receiving failing grades in middle school are at a higher risk of being off track for graduation already by ninth grade. Another research he cited, it was titled, Why Is Ninth Grade A Critical Time For Students? Explains that, get this, two failing grades in ninth grade can decrease the probability of an on-time graduation by 50%. So let's dig into that middle school data now. So you can see on this slide that 86.1% of middle school students successfully passed all of their trimester one classes this school year. So that means 86.1% of students received no failing grades in trimester one. And despite the increase in academic rigor and expectations, that percentage increased in trimester two to 88.8%. Course completion rates historically fall in trimester three and we saw that trend again this year. It was a dip down to 81%, but I will note that the dip this year was not as steep as previous years. We see this trend at all six of our middle schools. And looking ahead, we are committed to continuous improvement. This is an important action step for us to begin the conversation about course completion dips in the trimester three as we remain committed to responding to the trends that we see. So I want to make sure that's an important point I, I make here. And as a quick aside to this, before we look to high school, we could also present this data in terms of the total number of courses that our middle school students take. And if we were to look at that number, we find that 94.95% of all middle school trimester three grades were passing grades. So when we look at it that way, notice it, it tells a more positive story, but we do want to honor that this is kind of the more student-focused data point as well. But it's a good number to celebrate there.
Can you repeat that number? I'm sorry. I don't want to lose it.
Yep. So of all trimester three middle school grades, 94.95% of them were passing grades. And now let's jump to high school. So a very similar presentation of data you see here. So in trimester one, 85.1% of our high school students passed all of their classes. In trimester two, that number jumped to 90%. And the trend we saw in trimester three with middle schools exists here for the high schools as well. With that passing rate, again, all students passing all their courses dipping to 83%. That number I shared with middle school, if we look at this in terms of courses, trimester three high school grades, all the grades given, 91.14% of them were passing grades. So within this data, we can also break down this data by demographic group. So that's the second handout provided to you. So you will notice that the percentage of middle school students by demographics who received a passing grade in all of their trimester one classes, again, this is middle school, ranged from 72 to 92%. In trimester two, the range was 76 to 93%. And in trimester three, the range was 50% to 89%. The percentage of students passing each of their courses decreased from trimester two to trimester three in all of those demographic groups. So we didn't see one demographic group more than the other. And then those same statistics for high school students now, so that's the second table you see, table you see on your handout. Our ranges were 68 to 92% for trimester one. In trimester two, it was 76 to 95. And trimester three, the range was 67 to 91%. So as I wrap this up, this data is really useful to us to help us identify students who are in need of academic support, as well as celebrate the students who are working really hard and making overall improvements. Our overall growth in the percentage of course completion data can in part be attributed to quite a few things. Grade checks that students complete in their advisory, sending automated grad, grade reports home to students and families, after-school study sessions, peer tutoring, and after-school credit recovery programs. So on behalf of Eric Hanson, who couldn't be here this, this evening, we're really grateful of the work of our teachers that they do to keep students on track and supportive. Our teachers have excellent systems in place to help our students stay on track when they are absent or just needing additional support. So thank you for letting me share attendance and course completion trends for the 2425 school year. Director Sorenson and I will stick around in case you have any questions for us. So thank you for the time.
Thank you very much. At this time, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none questions or comments from board members.
I have a question.
Robin.
I have several questions, but I'll just sort of try and combine them a little bit. In one of the slides, it shows that the, you know, elementary attendance went up by 2.8%. Middle school by 0.9, high school by 1.5%. I know we're tracking things through a whole variety of systems, but is there, are there any trends on why attendance has gone up? Or can we see any specific reasons on what we're doing that are helping?
I think, I think it's a great question. I don't have a specific answer for you. I think one real general term is the farther we move away from the COVID area, the better we are getting with attendance. But in terms of something specific, I don't have anything about that. But something we can look into and, and pass on to you if we do identify something.
That would be great. And then I know my next question would be, this increased attendance, do we have any specific reason or idea if that has affected our graduation rates among groups that are increasing their attendance?
Well, so I'm going to back up to the first question too. I think something I'd like to say is I think we're being really intentional about attendance. I think that's, that would be, you know, a trend from our side, that we're being really thoughtful and each building has a team that looks at attendance regularly and we're putting plans into place. So that would be something I would add to that first piece. In terms of increasing graduation, that sounds like a secondary question. So I'm going to ask Stephen and if he doesn't have it, we can connect with Eric Hanson and he can get back to you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't want to speak from, I deal with numbers all day and I don't want to speculate there, but that's something we can absolutely follow up on. I don't have the precise number, but.
Okay. And then my last question is, and this is maybe into the weeds a little bit, but with, we're looking at students who are consistently attending school. And at the secondary level, I just wondered, how are PSEO students counted in that data?
Because they are not taking courses with us, we have no data for them.
I, I just meant, are they considered, since they are, some are doing halftime PSEO, some are doing full-time PSEO.
Sure.
If they're in our schools for half of the day, but they're attending all the courses that they're signed up for, is that considered consistently attending even though they're not with us a full day?
MDE has actually a very complicated formula for attendance and I can look that up. So I feel like I'm, I'm passing the buck here, but I will follow up. It may be just the time that they are with us. So. I don't know if it, Michael, I'm looking at you. I think it's, if they're not with us, they're not counted in our totals.
Okay. Thank you.
But I'll find out.
Thanks.
Other questions or comments? Yes, Catherine.
Um, so just looking at the numbers, there are disparities that exist here. Is there a way to see over time if our disparities are decreasing? So are we bringing groups closer to having the same percentages? Or are those disparities getting worse, you know, farther apart? That's something that I would be really interested in seeing because these are fairly large disparities. And are they also statistically significant in their differences? Just, I would love to know more about the disparities.
Sure. And we can follow up. We have, again, we can disaggregate data. We can slice it anyway with our Unified Insights, that data warehouse tool. So I, I see Jeremy writing it down, so I don't forget. So.
Great. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, next I would like to welcome Ed Hire, Julie Biersack and Dave Losdeter to the podium to go over technology in the classrooms.
Chairperson Johnson, members of the board and Superintendent Bolzoni, thank you for the opportunity tonight for us to speak about the expiring Capital Projects Technology Levy. Co-presenting with me will be Julie Biersack, Learning and Technology Specialist, and Dave Losdeter is the principal at Thomas Lake Elementary. So in 2015, the community made a commitment to increasing technology and the use of technology to enhance learning as outlined in the digital learning framework, which you'll hear more about from Julie. It's really the core of what we do and have done over the past 10 years. And I do want to take the opportunity to thank the public for entrusting the district with the past levy referendum in, in 2015. We, we believe we fulfilled our commitment. This will be the last year, the 10th year of that 10-year levy. And so we're going to be asking for a renewal and we'll be talking more tonight about what we've done and what we would like to do. So. So without voter approval, we will be forced to take a look at our budget and, and figure out how we can continue to sustain this program. Obviously, we don't want that to happen. We believe that the work we've been doing over the past 10 years has been very successful and we want to continue building on that investment that we've made over the last 10 years. So therefore, we, we are expecting in November that we would be asking the public for the opportunity to renew that commitment to, to digital learning. So tonight, the report's going to focus on what we've done over the past 10 years and what we need to sustain that. And then also what we've, in investigating, in that process of observing what we've done, we've identified some, some gaps that have come forth over the last 10 years because technology changes pretty dramatically in that timeframe. Okay, so let's, I guess, start with the basics. So what is the technology levy? And I'm going to be very high level right here. I'm going to go into more detail in a later slide, a couple of later slides. We focused this last, the current 10-year levy on instructional technology. We really zeroed in on that. And what does that mean? It means anything that really touches the students directly or very near directly, such as the network and that sort of thing, that makes their experience better. So it's, it's devices that the students have in their hands. It's devices the teachers have, classroom technologies that make their experience better. This year, we have 9.1 million that will be raised through that levy for some of those things that I'll talk about later for this school year. Before we get into all the numbers and the things and so forth, I do want to take a couple of minutes to hear from the students, a few of the students at our secondary schools and staff on how it's impacted them in their classroom.
I started on this one.
So teaching and learning has changed in the last decade tremendously. Technology allows us to make sure kids get what they need, when they need it, and how they need it.
When we were younger, we had to go to the library and use the encyclopedia.
They can do research on their iPads. There's a lot of tools and everything is available to them right at their fingertips.
I think the technology really helps our students understand how to find answers to questions and to collaborate with other people. Maybe go into a discussion post and write what they have to say, or they can send me a message.
In the elementary and middle school level, we're starting to build our foundation. And so once they get here, they already have the basic skills. So now we can get a little bit more creative. There is no sit and get here. They actually are doing critical thinking. They're troubleshooting. They're spending time inside of the AI realm and it gives it a question and it spits something back at them, but then they have to say, is that real? Is that true?
This is computer science principles. You learn how to like code JavaScript and make apps. I love to build some kind of app in the future because, one, it's great for careers. It's great for your resume. And also because the world kind of relies on technology these days and it's something that. and also because the world kind of relies on technology these days, and it's something that every person should have as a skill.
The reason I like doing this kind of work is because it's really like hands-on. That's a big part of this class, where you get to actually hold the devices and you get to actually tinker around with things. I want to do something with more technology when I'm past high school into college, and I think this class really does help me get the fundamentals of what I want to do in the future.
Seven post-graduates have reached back out to me and said, "Miss Ente, I learned this in your class, and I just figured this out, that I wanted to go into cyber when I was in your class, and now I've been in cybersecurity for three years." And so, it helps students just have the tools they may not have gotten anywhere else and that their peers in the field may not have. And so, that allows them to get a leg up and be like, oh, I learned this in high school. And they get the job because they have the skill.
My older son, he's going into a technology field, so like he wants to do programming and data science. So, working with technology helped him, especially with coding.
The school system is trying to produce students that can step out of the school system and be productive. When they step outside of our doors, no matter where they go, they're going into a digital world.
We teach lifelong learning, and that piece is like, go look for something, go find it. That skill when they get in the field allows their technology education to grow.
I think the skills, the tools that they've learned will launch them into the future.
Pretty exciting stuff. I kind of want to go back to school. So, okay, so that's a great story from them. So, we do need to talk about numbers a little bit, so we get some context around how we got, are able to make that happen. So, in 2015, the tech levy was approved for the one-to-one program primarily. So, we got access to our students to enhance the digital learning and access for students to information. The original levy has provided approximately $60 million over the course of the 10 years. That includes the 9.1 million that we're receiving this year. And if not renewed, as I said, we're going to be forced to take a look at budget cuts because we feel that this work is that important, that we need to somehow maintain some semblance of this experience that they have. But we know that this little thing called the internet's probably not going away anytime soon. Digital tools are just continuing to grow and become more and more a part of our lives. So, we think it's an incredibly important work. So, that's the why. That's why we're here tonight talking to you. So, as far as devices go, we're supporting and maintaining well over 30,000 devices, and that's the student one-to-one supplemental Chromebook cards and some of the things I'm going to talk about later. But it does not include administrative tools. That's not part of it. It does not include family engagement tools at this point. And so, there are, like I said, some gaps that we feel could be addressed. And then the last number up there, the 14 and a half full-time positions. One of the things that became very apparent in preparing for the 2015 levy was all of the different subgroups that met and talked about, okay, what is this going to look like before we go out and ask the public for the dollars? Is we need to have support. We need to have the people in place, or let's not do it because it's going to, it's not going to be successful. And so, very fortunately, we've been able to do that. So, we've got 14 and a half positions that are now funded through that levy. 12 of those positions are directly in the buildings with the students and the staff, mobile device support specialists. And they do incredible work every day. They have to go between buildings. They have to share buildings. But they're right there for the staff and students to access for assistance. The other two and a half positions are board district-level positions, two of them in my department. One of them really guides those 12 mobile device support specialists and makes sure that we're staying consistent in our messaging and how we're setting things up. And then a half position at our central receiving, which, very important work, manages our inventory, asset tags, things so we can track them, and then processes our repairs. Okay, so timeline. How did we get here? Over the course of the past year, we know this is very important work. We've been working towards this presentation tonight for about a year now, having conversations and discussing this. So, back in August, which actually isn't on this chart, there was an article in the Spotlight Community Newsletter that basically introduced the topic that this levy is coming to an end in the 25-26 school year. And then in November, there was a levy renewal committee formed, consisted of multiple stakeholders, administrators, instructional folks. And our task was to take a look at, how do we, how do we use the dollars these last 10 years? Is there a way that we can improve upon that, be more efficient? And then, what, we did a gap analysis of what's come up in those 10 years that we need to address. All right. And then in April, there was a public survey, a survey of our community that Morris Leatherman conducted. It was a survey of randomized 500 respondents. And Mr. Leatherman reported on that survey at the June 9th board meeting. And then in, between January and May, the Budget Advisory Council and the Legislative Advisory Councils met and discussed the renewal topic. And in May, the Budget Advisory Council actually came forth with the recommendation to renew, but not only renew, that they feel that we need to ask for a modest increase to meet our needs. So, that's where we are right now. We're in between that third and fourth dot at tonight's board meeting. And then in August, what we will be asking of you is to make a decision in August to call for a special election in November to renew the levy and, which corresponds with the regular school board election. All right. I'm going to pass it now over to Dave Losdeter.
All right. Good evening. It's really exciting to be here because when the initial 10-year levy started, I was in the role as teacher and building technology support. And I think about that time, that was a computer lab of 30 computers, and we were so excited about the three iPads that we found a way to buy through some PTL money. And now, looking at the numbers that Ed shared, 30,000 devices, 10 years later, a completely transformed experience of teaching and learning for our staff and students. And it's just been so fun to move from that teaching position to school leader position and watch that transformation occur and the success that we've had with our students. Today, I get to talk to you just a little bit about funding sources. And when I think about it, I think it's a shared commitment together of supporting our schools and our students to bring a really exciting and engaging experience, and in this case, through technology. In Minnesota, school funding is a shared responsibility. Funding comes from local sources. The largest portion comes from state aid, that's about 75%. And then a very small portion comes from the federal government. School funding can be complicated, so we want to take time to make sure we compare some of those different local sources that you hear about throughout the years that you've been members of our community. So, a technology-level levy, the one we're talking about tonight, is a voter-approved funding source. It pays for things like devices, support, software, and it lasts for 10 years. And it, as Ed had said, it's expiring soon. It's used for technology that supports learning. This is different than a bond referendum, which voters approved in May 2023. That referendum, or bond referendum, was used for the two new schools for many different renovations and additions. And we often say levies are for learning and bonds are for building. We, so think about bonds as paying for those construction costs. They last for 15 to 25 years, and they are borrowed upfront and repaid over time. And then last, we have an annual operating levy. The last one was approved in 2019, and that one will be good through 2029. It provides funding for day-to-day operations, things like more teachers to keep class sizes down, supporting student mental health, and funding to maintain the broad range of programs and opportunities that our community has come to expect from District 196. Tonight and this fall, we are focused on the first column, sustaining funding through our technology levy for digital learning and technology tools for the next 10 years. And just like young Dave 10 years ago, you know, we were so excited about what that could mean for us and all the things that have happened. We have what we have today, and we have exciting opportunity that we'll be reflecting on 10 years down the road with these funds and the way they serve our students and community. So, Ed referenced the Morris Leatherman survey. And so, whenever we go and talk to the community about asking for a levy, we take some data and we ask the community their perceptions and feelings about a variety of different topics, so we can make sure that we're representing their wishes in our service to them. We are a fiscally conservative district, and fiscal responsibility is an important priority. And through our survey, the community shows that they see that. 80% of respondents stated that they trust that the spending of our bond funding for facility improvements was efficient and in line with what was promised. Thinking specifically about the Technology Capital Projects Levy, 85% of our community support renewing the technology levy, and 64% support increasing the funds. And our Budget Advisory Council agrees. At their last meeting in May, they recommended renewing technology funding with a modest increase. On that same random sample survey in April, residents told us that they have a high-level satisfaction with our school system. And I think these are the things that make us feel most proud. We are here to create a great experience. And the things that they talked about, they like the variety of programs we offer. They think we have excellent academics, and they, of course, think we have very high-quality teachers. In fact, one of the things we are most proud about is that 93% rated the quality of education as excellent to good, which is something to be so proud of. And we've heard it throughout the night in all the different presentations, even in the public comment. At the same time, our community is highly engaged and sees the challenges ahead. Particularly, they see the state faces a deficit and education policy is changing at a federal level. And 71% of our respondents, they're concerned about the future, possible future cuts in education funding from either or both the state or federal level. So, with that high level of uncertainty, we want to focus on what we can do locally to sustain that outstanding education and the strong programming in schools that our District 196 community have come to expect. A couple others that we really want to highlight through that survey was the high level of trust that our families in our community place in our school district and our leadership and decision-making. And I think that is because we do a great job involving and listening to our community and involving them in meaningful ways. Our residents tell us that they are well-informed about the decisions. They trust our teachers and leaders and elected officials to make the best decisions in the best interests of our students. So, some things to celebrate up on our screen, 93% rate education quality excellent and good. 83% have a favorable rating of our school board. 94% have a positive rating of District 196 teachers, and 91% trust the district to do what is right. And we've gone through this data before at various different meetings, but that is a big deal. And our partners at Morris Leatherman would say that these are very significant results and not always the case across districts in our state. So, we should be very, very proud of what they had brought back to us from our community. So, got to share a lot of really great numbers and feedback with you. But again, back to the kids, we're going to hand it over to Julie, who's going to give you a little bit more of the in-depth look at how that actually transformed teaching and learning through these resources.
Thanks, Dave. Julie Biersack, Learning and Technology Specialist, K-12. And I got to talk about the fun stuff. I got to talk about the stories and what's happening with our students. And so, when we started to think about digital learning more than a decade ago, we couldn't imagine what would change and grow and develop with technology in our culture and our society. And so, we had a group of teachers and administrators and coordinators and tech leaders in our district that came together to create this framework. And so, as we did that, we wanted to be intentional about the tool we chose and how we prepared teachers and students. We wanted to provide students with this tool, not only that could provide an experience using a technology, but also open doors to creativity and help them thrive and collaborate and grow in the classroom. And so, that's why we decided to utilize the iPad as our tool. And that's when we started to think about what we believe and how we're going to use that iPad in the classroom. And so, there are four sections that drive our innovation and decision-making. I've been here and I've talked about those before, but the way we've been able to live these out is pretty phenomenal. So, we think about access and analyze information. We're incredibly intentional about how our students access this information, the databases that we choose, how they go in, how they are conscious consumers with this tool, and think and learn together. We also know that communication and collaboration is vital and important. We didn't want a tool that silenced our classrooms. We wanted a tool that caused a hum and a buzz and students talking and learning together. And that is what the iPad has done. And so, we think about allowing our students to have that one-on-one engagement where they're sitting next to each other, collaborating. We no longer just want to see that teacher in the front of the classroom and a student might come up to the board and show their learning. Now, our learners have the opportunity to show their learning on the iPad and to instantly airplane it up for everybody to see, to show that learning, to communicate with each other in ways they never have before, and to hear voices that we haven't heard from students as they record their learning. And it's an opportunity for all learners. The accessibility features that the iPad provides is constantly growing and changing, and it helps every learner feel successful. I think I've shared this story before, but my own son is visually impaired, and he utilizes the iPad every day, and he gets to feel like everybody else in the classroom and how he uses that tool, and he gets to thrive and learn and grow with everybody else. We also know how important it is for opportunities to create. And so, we believe in innovating, creating, and publishing our work. And students using the iPad as a tool, one of the many tools. Books are not going away, and our notebooks are not going away, and students are going to write and create and do these things, and they're going to have the opportunity to create in unique ways with the iPad as well. And so, I think about, when I, in the classroom, taught second grade, I think about the ways that students could create and the ways that they got curious. And it was more, a lot of teachers tell me how they're a little nervous, like technology is constantly changing, and there's so many new things that can grow and develop, right? Well, when we tell our students to get curious, I tell adults to get that way too. And sometimes, that's really hard. And so, I think about, in my own classroom, I had a student named Leo, and he could get very curious with the iPad. And the things that he was able to show with a class and the ways that they were able to create things was more than I could have ever imagined. And so, in my role and my capacity, I often meet with teachers and I tell them, find your Leo. Find those curious students that are creating and pushing buttons. And every now and then, he'd be like, Ms. B, I was, I did this, and you might be mad. I'm like, no, no, step back. Like, tell us what you did. Like, tell us what you learned. Tell us what button you pushed to do that. And so, we really create the students are like the lead learners in this work. And so, that's what I think of when I think of the innovation and the creation that students are able to do. And then, most importantly, we talk about this for solid foundation. Digital citizenship is a piece of the puzzle, but it's really our foundation. Okay? We have that, we define that in our district as positive contributors and conscious consumers. We want our students to think about how are they contributing to the digital world and what they put out there? And also, how are they consuming this? And it's a constant, ongoing conversation. And we get to keep having these conversations as technology's changing and conversations around as AI, as we talk with our staff, especially in secondary, and how that tool might be utilized and the intentionality and the idea of clear as kind and really helping our students understand how we might use this. That's our job. That's our responsibility as we think about utilizing this tool. And so, we really want to be thoughtful about how all of those important pieces. And then I think about our graduates, they just graduated, class of 2025. Think about, even three years ago, we could have never imagined the world they're graduating into. And thinking about how the framework that we have right in front of you, it held the test of time. We could go back to that and utilize that piece. And now, this September, we're seeing the class of 2038 join us, those little learners. And how are we preparing? Technology's not going away. And more than ever, how thoughtful we need to be in preparing them for that world, our technology world. And so, thinking of those little learners, we had a chance to hear and see from a high school level all of the learning that's happening, and now we're going to hear from some families and students at the elementary level.
Technology was not a thing when I was in school. Everything was pencil and paper. And now that I own my own business, there are some things that my kids are teaching me as far as technology goes.
We use technology on a daily basis. This year, we have new curriculum for literacy, math, phonics, and each one of those components has a technology portion. There are a lot of skills that kids can learn from technology, digital literacy, learning how to use it. learning how to use the technology appropriately, as well as critical thinking and problem solving.
Having the tools available to me to be able to share more things with my class during whole group lessons, having things displayed that I'm writing on my iPad and they can see what I'm doing in real time. There are also quizzes and things online that are self-grading, so I can see how they're doing without spending hours going through every single quiz. It takes a lot off my plate, so I can more focus on the kids and look at individual needs and more build relationships.
Technology is piquing their curiosity and making that creativity. It's just in a different way. These tablets are a tool that they use in a way that enhances their learning. It doesn't replace learning from us.
There's also a lot of opportunities for them to create on their iPad using Book Creator or making iMovies and show their creativity in that way. And they're super proud of it when they get those things done.
How my iPad works, so it's like connecting to it. So there's like a mode we encode and there's like here. So there's aim one and then when you look at this, when you aim it, there's a whole camera that shows you where it goes.
Learning with technology has definitely sparked curiosity in that they are more apt to find answers for themselves.
It's very important as technology is ingrained into our society that students learn how to use it appropriately and know how to solve problems with it. It's not going anywhere and I think it's very important that we teach students all about it in a way that is appropriate for them at their age level in order to be successful.
By having them experience a proper way to use technology where it's not consuming their lives and they're not doing everything and relying on it completely, I think is very beneficial for them. They have this balance, they're learning of I can do things without it, but I have it to help if I need it. And that will be helpful moving forward in high school and in careers.
So hopefully you heard that buzz in the classroom. Kids are talking and they're collaborating and they're sitting next to each other and they're thinking of really creative things as they work together. You also saw students are writing, students are brainstorming, students are getting their thoughts on paper. And we want to see the really healthy balance. And that's what we're constantly promoting for teachers and for students. And so when we think about our community, we think about how our community values the technology in education. We know our mission is to educate, develop and inspire students for lifelong success. Technology is part of that lifelong success and we're living through a rapid area, era of technology iteration. We're proud of the work that we've done these last 10 years. It stood the test of time. And our community sees those results. As you can see on the screen, eighty-two percent of our community believe that technology tools that we're providing are excellent or good. And so we're working from a position of strength. And still we know that things are changing and growing and developing and we have work to do. We also know from this survey that seventy-two percent believe that technology is very important or essential for learning. And now I'm going to hand it back to Ed and let him speak a little bit more to the levy in our work.
All right, so before us, I guess we've got a couple of different options on how to proceed with a renewal. Option one would be a renewal of the existing technology levy. So just real quickly, how we're spending the money on those, the current dollars that we do receive. The primary one is student devices and we've talked about that. It also includes Chromebook labs and computer labs and things that fill the gap where the iPad is not the tool, the best tool for that particular task. It also includes, I've talked about the mobile tech support a bit, so it covers that. The stable funding for classroom technology, very important. Each year, each building gets a budget that they can use for interactive classroom technologies is what we like to phrase it as. And we have parameters around how those dollars can be spent, but it's relatively loose. Each building has different needs at different times. So what that includes is the projectors or TV displays, whatever they've got that they need to keep updated, audio systems in the classroom. It can be specialized things like 3D printers or maybe a lab of micro robots that they use for a STEM lesson, those types of things. Digital instruction software, so our learning management systems are covered through these dollars. Schoology is our learning management system for most of our grade levels. Seesaw at the primary grades, various databases that Julie referenced that students have access to for research. We cover that with these dollars. And then creativity and productivity tools that the students and staff use every day, including Explain Everything for note taking, EdPuzzle, Pick Collage for creativity building. It was referenced in the video was Book Creator. And then the last one is cybersecurity networks, cybersecurity and networks. So cybersecurity is really something that's come strong here in the past three, four years, five years, the second half of this levy. Threat actors are becoming much more aggressive, especially to education. We are becoming a bigger and bigger target. And so we've had to put some systems in place to help protect the district. And that's just going to continue to grow and get more sophisticated. And so we have to be able to keep up with that. And then we update our network periodically. We just finished an update in the past couple of years. We updated our firewall, our servers, all of our network switches and wireless access points at the secondary level. Elementary is going to be up for a replacement here next summer. So these dollars will cover that. So again, just a reminder, nine point one million this year, if not renewed, that we need to figure out how to cover some of these things. The second option is to ask for an increase. And we did a gap analysis, as I referenced before, of what was missing. What do we need to do or what we like to do? But the funding isn't there for us to do that. And so the, one of the biggest things is, well, we talked about cybersecurity. That's going to, I think, just continue to be unfortunately, an area we need to pay attention to. But the biggest cost factor is probably the increase in the shift from analog to digital instructional tools or curriculum, I should say. So we're moving basically from textbooks to, oops, textbooks to subscriptions, online subscriptions. The difference, the big difference there is that textbooks was a one-time purchase for the curriculum cycle, which typically was, you know, seven to 10 years that you could use those books, so it was a one-time purchase upfront. The subscriptions are going to be an annual cost. So, you know, once you go through the, say, for example, the science review, the science curriculum review, we're going to have a science subscription every year, math subscription every year versus buying those books in staggered years. So that's, that's going to be a big factor for us. We'd love to expand our computer science education opportunities. Right now, it's funded through a grant and it's relatively limited in scope. We'd like to expand that across the district and make those opportunities available to all students more easily. Enhancing operational efficiencies, this is a lot of our core software, trying to make them work together better. And sometimes that means we need to switch from a legacy system to a new, more updated system. Typically, that means an increase in cost, unfortunately. Newer systems will come with a higher ticket price. And then last, but certainly not least, is we'd love to be able to offer additional STEM and career and technical education programs. Could include things like additional CAD opportunities, aviation, design, broadcasting, and potentially even move into the health and science occupations. So we just want to make those opportunities available to as many students as we can where they become creators versus consumers, as Julie talked about. So I guess in summary, 10 years ago, we didn't know what was going to be available in 2025. You know, it was anyone's best guess. While we're in 2025, we know what happened those 10 years and we think we've learned from that to some extent, but we don't know what 2035 is going to look like. So we need to set ourselves up for success with some of those things that haven't even been invented yet, but is going to affect the classroom and our students going forward. So I will turn it over to Dave to finish this out.
All right, as Ed said, I get to close it up here. And I just want to close and say how exciting this work is. It was super fun hearing about all the great things that Nutrition Services are doing, having been at Thomas Lake and seen that in action and seeing the joy that that brings to our kids. And then not only our kids, but the way that our community interacts with us in the school. We bring them into us. It forms that even stronger bond and connection. And it's just so fun to watch that innovation come to light. And the same is true for our technology levy. The levy brings us opportunity to continue to innovate and bring joy and excitement into our classrooms, both now and into the future. Thinking about our students in the year 2038, it is extremely exciting. Think of the ways that we can help them reach their fullest potential. So we have talked a lot tonight and shared a lot of information. The goal was to inform, provide some transparency and to continue to maintain that high level of trust that you shared that you have with us in the recent community survey. We wanted you to understand the why behind a levy like this and how it could benefit our students to continue that commitment to our technology resources. We do have an ask of our community to be involved this fall with this process. And there's three things that we ask. We ask you to stay informed. We will continue to share information so that you can be in the loop and know all the whys, all the hows and all the different things that you need to be a part of this process and be a partner with our district. We'd like you to spread the word. As you learn and hear all the different information that we're sharing, make sure your neighbors know about it. Spread the word on social media, tell a neighbor down the road. Help us share our story and our message so that people can be informed and involved. And last, get out and vote. Make a plan, get to the voting booth, vote early and then encourage others to vote because it's really important that everybody's voices are lifted up and have a say in our processes. And with that, I want to thank everybody for their time and for their support and especially for your support in our students and in our schools. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. At this time, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none questions or comments from board members. Thank you very much. Oh, Jackie, did you have something?
Not so much a question. We'll get a lot more information. I really liked the part that you talked about of identifying gaps. We know what we have and you did a great job of showing kids excitement and the buzz in the classroom. But the identifying gaps as things progress and we continue to innovate and we don't know what's going to be two years from now or what the funding will be. Those are, to me, the big darts to the heart. Those are the things that we want to take and go, yeah, this is important to us. As we continue to innovate, we're missing pieces here. So thank you for bringing that part of it forward.
Thank you very much for putting the presentation together and for your time tonight. I really wanted to highlight the videos and how important and impactful those are. I remember, I mean, when I was in school, I, I mean, I don't even think I'm that old, but I mean, I, we had the five-inch floppy disks that went in. So, right, and then you had to turn on and it booted up Oregon Trail. So, right? So it's really hard, I think, for a lot of voters to wrap their head around how we're using these funds. But then when you see students in high school who are literally putting chips together, who, others who are coding apps and you can see it, it becomes a lot more real, a lot more impactful and easier to wrap your head around. So, but like you said, technology is moving so fast. It's moved so fast since when the average voter was in school that they can't really relate. So a lot of the videos and the background is really, really helpful. So thank you for putting those together. And Anna has one more thing now. Is it about Oregon Trail?
No, although my husband and my daughter do play it, which is weird. And a better updated version, and usually I die in it from something. But I just wanted to say this actually underscores the importance of how we use technology and that critical thinking component. I don't know if it was the New York Times, not New York Times, but something on Apple News and it had a test you could take to see if you could spot the AI fake. My daughter got ninety percent. I failed miserably. I did not have the same success rate. And so I think about that foundational piece that our district is providing and how she is more in tuned to what's real and what isn't and has the ability to check and think about sources of where she can check and identify. And I think, you know, with the sentiment around AI and it's, some people are very afraid of the future with AI. And I think what I'm sensing from at least my daughter, who just graduated in 2024, she has a more realistic and less fearful vision of AI because of that early exposure, because of the curriculum that the district has provided. And also she has a different relationship with her phone, her smartphone, because she got to play in the sandbox here with an iPad. And so her relationship with her phone is probably healthier than my relationship with the phone because she's had a lot more training and a lot more exposure. And, and we've talked about that balancing. And so I think, you know, as a, as a parent, I didn't have that. We didn't have that. And so there are some things that parents aren't able to provide for their students that we really do rely on our public education to do that. So thank you. This was very informative.
Thank you very much. All right. We have no items for old business, so that brings us to our new business. And we're going to keep the conversation going by welcoming Adam Wattenberger to the podium to discuss a resolution calling for a referendum to renew the 2015 Capital Projects Technology Levy and the first reading.
All right. Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, school board members and Superintendent Bolsoni. I'm here tonight with a draft resolution calling a referendum to renew the 2015 Capital Project Technology Levy. As we just discussed in the last presentation, our current technology levy is expiring and there's a lot of important work we do with that funding. So we will be recommending calling a special election to continue that source of funding. That'll be held this fall and November in conjunction with our school board election. That has already been called by the board. What you have before you tonight is really more of a template or a sample to kind of visualize what that resolution will look like. It's not, at this point, a specific substantive recommendation in terms of what amount we are going to be seeking or whether there's one or two questions or what those questions will specifically be formatted like. Those discussions are ongoing. The administration's continuing to analyze that data and seek feedback, including feedback from school board members before we present a final recommendation next month on what question or questions we're going to present to the voters. But what you have before you does include the technical language, general formatting that that resolution will look like. So that's something that you'll have available to review and I can certainly answer any questions on any of those terms. But otherwise, this is not an action item and the final resolution with that specific proposal will be brought back for board action at the August 11th meeting. That concludes my comments. Happy to take any questions, though.
Thank you very much. At this time, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none questions or comments from board members. Thank you very much. And hopefully we'll be getting a lot of feedback probably from the community as well and we will see you back on August 11th.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to welcome Jill Coyle to the podium to go over the first reading of Regulation 703.5.8 AR, Admission Charges to School Events.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, members of the board and Superintendent Bolsoni. I am before you today with new business to take a look at proposed changes to District Regulation 703.5.8 AR, Admission Charges to School Events. This is a regulation that governs admission charges to a number of school activities, including plays, musical productions and athletic events. This has not been changed in terms of increasing admission charges since the 2010, 2011 school year, so it's been a while. And we are before you tonight looking for small increases to those admission charges. So specifically, what you can see in the proposed regulation are changes of $1 to the cost of middle school plays. And then additional fees may apply to those middle schools that use an online ticketing method. And then at the high school level, we are recommending $2 increases to all three activities that are covered, specifically plays, musical productions and athletic events. This is a new business item tonight, so we'll come back to you seeking approval in August. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. I do want to give you one other note, and that is that we are continuing to study this regulation. You may see this come back to you again in another round, deeper in the school year. We're taking a look specifically. We're taking a look specifically at season passes. Is there something we want to do there with structure? As well as some thoughts about when we charge students for admission to athletic events. So we're doing some more study, but we wanted to make these admission increases effective prior to the start of the school year. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. At this time, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members?
I have, I have a question.
Robin.
My question is, will senior citizens still be allowed in free at our athletic events? Or will that change with the change in this policy?
No, that will not change. That remains a benefit that we offer to our senior adults in the community.
My dad will be very happy to hear that. And then the second question I had is, will this change any of our senior preview events for our high school plays?
Again, to my knowledge that there will be no impact to, to those events either.
Great, thank you.
Other questions or comments from the school board? Seeing none, we will see you back here at August 11th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes our new business, so that brings us to other action. And I'd like to welcome Christopher Anyanga-Robshad to the podium to go over a resolution for sale of general obligations, facility maintenance and school building bonds.
Good evening, Chair Johnson, School Board members, Superintendent Bolsoni and our public stakeholders. I'm Christopher Anyanga-Robshad, Director of Finance and Operations. I am here to present a resolution for the sale of general obligation and facilities, maintenance, building bonds. This is in relation to the action that was taken by our voters authorizing for the, in the May 9th, 2023 election, they authorized us to fund certain building projects. At the time, we had planned to issue bonds within two cycles. So the first stash of bonds was sold in August of 2023. It has funded the, the projects for the elementary school, the ongoing project for the Rosemont Middle School and the additions here at Dakota Ridge. We are seeking at some point to issue the next set of bonds to continue funding the remaining projects. So far, the timing of the actual bond sale will be determined on the cash flow based on cash flow needs of the projects and then the market conditions. The board at this point is just authorizing us to seek the, we're working with, with Ella's and Darcy, our accountant, our bond counsel, to seek written proposals for the issuance of these bonds. The actual authorization will come back later. The timing for this may seem a little off, but what we have to do based on how we need to time it with the levy, it needs to go into the levy process that will be coming up starting in September. So the actual bond issuances will happen sometime either in the spring of next, of 2026, but it is within the 2026 calendar year for which those levies would be levied from the public. So that's why it's coming now. So it's in line with our levy process, but the actual issuances, which will also come back to the school board, that process will be happening at the earliest in the spring of 2026. I'm done. I'm happy to answer any questions that, that you may have, but for now, this is an action item and we would seek approval.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Christopher. Like Christopher said, this is an action item tonight, so before we go into questions, is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Jackie, seconded by Anna. At this time, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? Only thing I wanted to add is, thank you for your due diligence in managing these funds because I think a lot of times the average taxpayer might not realize that this is the second time. We did a, a vote for the bond, which started our, our activity centers, but this is the second time you've actually, we've done the sale of the bonds. And the reason that we broke it up into two is really to save taxpayer money because we knew we didn't need all the money at once. So again, by breaking that up and to do, two, it really has ended up saving the taxpayer money. So they're not, they're not getting that bill all at once. So I just wanted to thank you for how you are thinking about breaking that up. So, you know, people aren't feeling it, we're not just sitting on money and charging taxpayers when we don't actually need it right away. It's great financial management.
Thank you.
Right now we have a motion to approve from Jackie, seconded by Anna. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries on a 7-0 vote. Thank you very much. That brings us almost to the end of our agenda tonight. I will turn it over to Superintendent Bolsoni for superintendent updates.
Sure. Thank you, Chair Johnson. Speaking of school construction, we have work progressing at 11 sites throughout the school district right now. We're excited to see the finishing touches being put on our 20th elementary school, Emerald Trail, right now. We are scheduling a ribbon cutting ceremony for August 20th at 8:00 AM and will invite the public to an open house later in September after the school year opens. Walls are starting to go up at the new Rosemont Middle School and at the Eastview High School Activity Center, while excavation work is continuing for Apple Valley High School and their Activity Center. Work is also underway here at Dakota Ridge, also at Falcon Ridge Middle School, Scott Highlands Middle School, Highland Elementary School, Valley Middle School of STEM and Thomas Lake Elementary School. The public, next topic, public is invited to see Nine to Five the Musical presented at Egan Summer Community Theater. It opens this Thursday, July 17th and runs through Saturday, July 26th at Egan High School. And lastly, we are already getting ready for the upcoming 25, 26 school year. To help families prepare, we have created a back-to-school resources hub on our website. It's filled with important information, handy checklists and action items like updating school contact information, school supply lists, immunization and athletics information. Registration for fall sports and activities is already open and we encourage all families to register early. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent Bolsoni. Are there any board members with items they'd like to share? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Still moved. Second.
Motion to adjourn by Robin, seconded by Catherine. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries on a 7-0 vote. We stand adjourned.